Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, July 8, 2025. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Warren and that one. Now where? Where are our eastern commissioners?
These guys.
Do I need to buy you a Mickey Mouse watch or something?
I just locked my door for the means. She can't get in there. He goes upstairs because I was upset about him.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. Any Minnesota report for safety file?
Yes. We received the June 2025 fees for the reporter, the county clerk, and the sheriff. We also got the auditor's June 2025 revenue expenditure report. And the assessor submitted the whole county assessed valuations of taxable property after January 1st, 2025, and submitted the Form 11 aggregate abstract.
Okay, Commissioner, committee.
Yes, I'm a force. How come you didn't say that?
We've got plenty of mission. Meeting this evening. HBA, don't we don't have that? Do a meeting with the constituent tomorrow about some right away on the Tanner Bridge project. Then Missouri Solid Waste Management District meeting Thursday. And then Saturday, there's a habitat home dedication on the East Moon project. I think that's about it.
Today is a Missouri State Tax Commission meeting this afternoon. Thursday, a city public works committee meeting. And Monday, this next Monday, our United Way golf.
Yes.
What's Monday?
United Way.
Okay.
Public Works sponsored.
Okay, well, today, I think, is the stronghold landing groundbreaking noon. Wednesday, our 250th, Cole County 250th Committee is doing a presentation. I'm sure you'll see those lines. Thursday morning, I have a meeting at the chamber. United Way Pace Center launch is Thursday morning also. And then Sunday is St. Martin's Parish picnic. So, do I come out and eat fried chicken? That's a lot of guys. Any commission comments? Okay. Then the contracts. Approval and signing of the contract with autonomy today LLC.
Morning.
Good morning.
This is the company that runs the, maintains the database for our inmates' medical records. And you guys approved 3C, which is our new medical contractor. I think about four or five weeks ago. So, this is just a company that partners with them to maintain the medical records for our inmates. So, we just asked the two of you to approve and sign this agreement. Jill has had an opportunity for you to do this as well.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the contract with autonomy today LLC. This covers inmates' medical records.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Stormwater and pavement improvements update in the Westview Heights.
So, we've got a lot of work going on in this neighborhood. And it encompasses a pretty large area, pretty, as far as residential part of the incorporated parts of the county. This is by far our biggest. And so, we have a lot of work going on here. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, the commission was up to date and aware of the process we're going through to get all of these subdivision streets brought up to good conditions for our stormwater goes, and curb and gutter for that matter, as part of the drainage system. And then ultimately, final overlays of the road. So, I'll just go through real quick. And when this is done, the next agenda item is a follow-up to this that Matt has on there for some stormwater engineering work that ties into this schedule of activities out there. So, got it broken up into five different areas. It's color-coded. And if you need a, if you need a copy, I got some bigger ones here. I know some of the dots on there represent inlets. If you want a bigger one, I can give it to you. If not, okay.
You sent it to us.
Yeah, I did send it. I sent it earlier. So, if you look at the drawing there, it's got color-coded dots. It's not 100% right. Some of them may be miscolored. But red dots signify inlets that are by current standards. So, a curb inlet type inlet, we call it type A. Ones that are yellow are the graded type inlets. And that generally is indicative of an older system. The inlets are poorly constructed. They're graded, they clog leaves easily. And usually, there's a pipe attached to that that's probably in pretty poor shape. So, when we go through and do these projects to improve the stormwater, we look at everything, everything underground side of that, make sure it's adequate, and make sure it's built for the long, long term. And so, back, I don't know the exact year, 2012-ish maybe, we did some work on Bagwell Drive. And I'm gonna start off with Westview Heights South. So, again, there's five different areas that we're focusing on. The green is the Westview Heights South area. We did some work on Bagwell Drive and improved three locations. Some of the stuff a little further towards Thane Park, that was done a little, not as, it's not, it's a newer part of that subdivision. And so, those are inlets that are standing by today as the way we build today, the type As. But, so, we did some work out on Bagwell. That followed up a few years later with some pretty large projects on South Brooks Drive. And then we hit the South Brooks Drive Phase 3 project, got the CDBG grant. And that has carried on a little longer than we planned due to just regulatory oversight and acquiring right-of-way. And Matt could give you an hour long explanation on that, but we don't need to do that right now. But, we're actually probably, it's a blessing in disguise if that happened. Because simultaneously with that, maybe following up that a little bit, Jefferson City Sewer has been doing a lot of upgrades out in this subdivision. The biggest one is a forest maintenance replacing that will run from the holding tank and pump station in Thane Park all the way, it'll make its way all the way actually up to County Club. And so, it runs through and kind of snakes through the subdivision. So, and we recently signed an agreement with Jefferson City for this sewer work. And so, they're gonna do this work, and they, it's gonna be in the streets. And they'll, after they're done, they'll patch it back. And then when we're, we come back later and do the overlay, they'll pay for basically one lane of an overlay. And that's worked into the agreement. So, schedule-wise, so Westview South. If things can pull together, Matt's working on, you got how many other highways out of?
About 30 out of 49.
Yeah, so getting there, it's a process, but we'll get there. Ideally, we'll bid that maybe this fall sometime. And so, most of the work will be in 2026. The sewer work is also gonna be in 2026. When that's all done, we're wanting to overlay the next years to 2027. So, if everything can pull together like we expect, we'll overlay everything in the green in 2027. So, with the sewer project, also part of the agreement that the engineering company for Jefferson City Sewer is gonna do one, design one location of the stormwater improvement. We'll work that into their, their project. And so, that'll take care of one of those on Bagwell. And then also, what Matt will bring to you, the next agenda item. There's seven locations to design, and they're basically inlets and outlet pipes, not too complicated. And that'll be an engineering contract to get started this year with design completed and rated bid out next year. So, get all the stormwater work, sewer, everything done next year and overlay in 2027. Then we go a little south to Shear Drive. And coupled with that, a little to the south and to the east is Scrug Station. Those are two project areas needing, Shear Drive, it's more just replacing the systems that are in there right now. Scrug Station, it's really inadequate what we have out there. So, we need to improve the capacity of that whole stretch through there. So, that project, we're gonna budget for 2027 for the engineering and complete that in 2027 to be able to bid the stormwater in 28. I'm sorry, we'll do it in 26. Build it in 27. And then do the overlay in 28. So, green area 27, overlay the purple and the yellow in 28. Then we have Westview North. A lot of that work's already been done. We did a few projects previously to improve the stormwater. We have two little, small locations to do stormwater-wise. And we would do that work in 28 and then overlay that in 29. And then the last item, and this would complete really everything in the Westview area, would be the detention basin that we're working on. We're saying that's 28 or beyond. There's quite a, quite a bit of regulatory approvals that we have to get through, through the court of engineers. Classified as a wetland, we think. So, that'll be a little bit of a process. And that will have ultimate impacts on everything that it can be done as a standalone later. So, like I said to begin, we just wanted to bring commission up to date for the process. I know you've gotten a lot of calls out there on road condition. Scrug Station tends to be the one we get the most calls on, and it is in poor condition. And we tell people just like that, in Westview and everything else, we have to do the underground work first. That way, we're not tearing up the payments doing it later. And when we do the overlay, it's gonna be in good shape and can last for a long time. Pretty sure our maintenance crews are gonna do what we call boxing it. So, they'll do a thin lift overlay just to get us by on Scrug Station for a few years and then some of the other areas. So, that's the process we're looking at. So, if you get calls, we're happy to pass this, maybe pass this on to them. But we do have a process and it's scheduled to get all of this done. If everything comes together, and we believe it can, within the next three or four years.
Is some of this contingent upon a renewal of capital improvements or?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the sales tax, which expires in 26.
Right.
So, if it passes, we'll do 27. And, you know, to add to that, this is a lot of overwork. And it's, it's a lot. We don't have an exact number. But one thing we're definitely looking at in the next sales tax, and we'll get that information out when the time comes, is to increase the amount of money we're putting into overlays. Right now, we have budgeted 1.75 for the current tax. We're looking at at least 2 million, possibly even more. Because what we need to do is make sure we're taking care of our payments. The better you take care of them, the longer they last. So, it's, it's, it'd be a pretty big expense. But if we have to do it to make sure our rate payments stay in good condition. So, I just wanted to get that in front of you, get that scheduled. Any questions? And we'll have this maybe posted on the website and get some information out to people that might be interested.
Thanks, sir.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, approval of agreement for professional services for Westview Heights subdivision stormwater improvements.
So, to piggyback off work, Eric had, this is another engineering services contract for out in that area. It is with Bartlett and West for $74,504. With this agreement, Bartlett and West will provide professional engineering services to evaluate stormwater infrastructure and design necessary improvements at seven locations in the Westview Heights area.
I'll let Harry do it, don't you say. It's how nice we are to each other. If a newspaper doesn't like it, it's boring.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Bartlett and West, price of $74,504, professional services for Westview Heights subdivision stormwater improvements.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just real quick, were there some projects that we've done in the past upstream from that that have helped this stormwater issue down there too? And then we?
Yeah.
Or was that in a different area farther?
I should've explained that a little bit. So, on, on the drawing, Jeff, is this green kind of boxed area.
Okay, it was this one then?
Yes. And that's that.
How did that work out, pretty good?
It's not done yet. It's, it's gonna be built with the CDBG South Brooks 3 project. And that actually is an over, an over-design in, or detention basin as part of the Kaufman development. We're overbuilding it to allow us to, to make sure the stormwater works downstream of that. And so, yeah, that's definitely part of that.
Yeah, so this, the new project should help this old project too, so.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of alluding to the McBride project too. So, hopefully, we can get the same thing there for some of them down there on Rush Creek, so. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Approval of table purchase for EMS Station 4.
Morning.
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 So, this is a custom table for Station 4 remodel. It's a 96 by 48 table that has the epoxy graphics like we did downtown. Obviously changed to match the station location. Made by manufacturer in Virginia. And the total project price is $4,150, and that includes shipping. This was included in the budget for the project. There were a couple pictures of what the design looked like included. So, just asking for your permission to approve that today.
Take your core bed up there and pick it up, Sam.
What's the size?
84 by 8.
96 by 48. So, you know, the unfortunate thing is.
Teetops, wouldn't it?
What's that?
Go right around the teetops, go through a couple straps.
I think maybe you're cheap.
We'd save a lot of money on shipping.
I don't know if you wanna go that far in a Jeep.
I think I would pass.
It would fit in the trunk of your Lincoln.
That Lincoln, it probably would. That thing's 19 feet long.
Yep, I'm good. All right, I'll make motion to approve the proposal to build a kitchen firehouse table for Cole County EMS for $4,150.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Approval of chairs from Samco.
Yep, so this is chairs for the table and for the desks in the renovated bedrooms. These are the same chairs that we put in facility downtown. They are off state contract. Total for six chairs at $384.56 apiece is $2,405.1. This was also in the project budget.
I'm afraid Harry's gonna try to get them down to $2,405. Good.
I'll go for the extra penny.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the chairs, the six chairs, total $2,405.1.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Discussion of CPR and first aid training.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll change hats and, and put on the emergency management slash safety committee hat. So, we had a meeting last month of the Cole County Safety Committee discussing the AEDs and some of the things that have happened since we installed them. So, going way back, the commission decided to replace all of the county automated external defibrillators and the storage boxes in the county buildings in which they're stored. That was completed a couple months ago. And then, in subsequent time, we learned that some county personnel had decided to add Narcan and some tourniquets for stop the bleed into some of the boxes. So, the, the question or the, the conversation at safety committee meeting really revolved around standardizing those, which I believe i- is important. If we're going to make those products available in one box or two boxes, they should be available in all of the boxes. So, everybody did agree with that. And then, taking it a step further, is the ongoing question about training and making sure that people know how to use this equipment. From a public safety standpoint, you know, we're firm believers that if we're going to have, make something available and encourage folks to use it, that they should be trained in its proper use. While all of these things are pretty self-explanatory and they are relatively low-risk, they do not come without risk if they are improperly used. So, the conversation at safety committee really revolved around what do we do to ensure that our folks know how to use these things and are able to do it safely? We tossed around a bunch of different ideas. And ultimately, I think the group kind of decided that we felt it would be in the county's best interest for all employees to receive CPR and first aid training. Now, what I wanna make clear before we go any further in this discussion is that just because you receive the training, doesn't mean that you are obligated to act. There are pieces of the training that teach you how to recognize things, how to access emergency services, how to use the device, but it doesn't mean that you have to do CPR on somebody. It doesn't mean that you have to give somebody Narcan if you're not comfortable in doing so. So, we feel this is a really worthwhile investment. And what we would propose is that all current employees and any future new hire employees would receive this training if it wasn't part of their already job description. But you would receive the training once, you don't have to keep up the certification, you don't need to, to re-cert every two years. And, you know, EMS along with the Health Department would, would facilitate those trainings. So, that is what the safety committee has brought to you as, as part of a discussion. So, happy to answer any questions or get into the weeds on where we want this to go.
Jen brought the numbers. So, for a while, we have been offering the training because the commissioners approved that it would be paid for by the worksite wellness fund. So, I did, Jen did pull the numbers of how many staff have reached out and how many have completed the training, if you're interested in that.
So, we, I had 40 people reach out to me about CPR training. Three had already been certified in the last year. Five signed up but never completed the videos to actually complete the training. So, we had a total of 32 employees who completed CPR training.
But that's separate from like Pringer Center, because we went and did theirs separately. This is just the ones that signed up for the classes at our office. But Jen has offered also, we've been trying to find a date for Public Works because we could just go there and do the training there. And EMS staff to volunteer to help, because you can only have so many participants per trainer for the training, so.
I, I personally would like to, we've got the AEDs, we've got the stickers on the doors saying we have the AEDs. I wouldn't know how to, to use them. I mean, granted, you said it, it has instructions. But I, I would like to learn just, you know, if we're gonna have them and even know how to operate them.
So, you should've signed up for the CPR class.
Well, I.
Told you how to use it.
If we can do it on.
It's, it's Sam-Prus.
Then I will do that.
Yeah, you do the majority online, and then you just do the skills test in front of Dan and Dana and Jeff.
Send me that, 'cause I, I'm like, okay, we've got these in all of our buildings now, but how many people actually know how to use it?
Yeah.
So, you got somebody who's, you know, has a medical issue, not breathing.
They don't have to know how to use it necessarily, just need to know where it's at so they can go get it for somebody that's trained.
But I think.
I think people knowing where it's at is probably more important than any of it. I don't wanna make people go through the training if they don't have the desire to, you know, perform something. It's, it's kind of a waste of time, but I don't know.
It'd be nice if, if you don't wanna mandate, mandate it for everyone. At least a few people in each office need to know what to do, where it is, and how to use it.
So, how do you pick who that is?
I don't know, maybe some people want to do it, you know, but we can start with that.
So, are you doing voluntarily, voluntold?
With, ask for volunteers to be on a, so like at the hospital, what we did was we had teams who would respond to emergencies. So, like I was part of a de-escalation team that whenever something like that happened, I had to respond to that because I was part of that team. So, if you have people from each department who would volunteer to be on a emergency response team, we have phones that, like, so at the Health Department, we have certain people that we train. Like, obviously, all of our nurses are trained, but we have certain people delegated to, when we, there's a way to go through the speaker phones of all of our phones. So, we will dial that number, page through the phones for a response. And the people who are delegated to respond then respond.
And that's kind of how we did it on first that the AED machines in. We just knew that there was at least one person on the floor that would know how to use it or respond. And they were all volunteers. We never needed employees, um, checking the CPG.
We asked for volunteers.
Whether they would be here the day something would happen, you know, I liked that idea. Having your time.
It's, it's a good idea for everyone to learn.
You said 30.
It's not just at work, it could be in the community and you find, you know.
You said 32 people went through the CPR training that you all, that emailed us. The Health Department's an anomaly, you got a lot of people over there, obviously.
In Pringer Center, they have to.
Probably Sheriff's Department's got a bunch of people over there too.
So, this does not include the Health Department. We did do a full training for everyone.
Well, I'm just trying to focus on where would, where would we need to have these teams?
Oh.
'Cause it does make sense to try to do that, find a volunteer.
Do you guys have to do it separately as part of your other training, CPR, AED? So, you do it separately and not necessarily do the Health Department?
No, we have our same structure.
So, this is just extra people who went there. So, they probably are kind of an anomaly too, of course EMS.
So, I would say that, and this is just a rough estimate off the top of my head, that 2/3 of the county workforce is required by their job description to have CPR training already. This just goes back to the offices where that is not a requirement. How do we bridge that gap? And?
I think we oughta shame them into it. And by doing it this way, not broadcasting names or initials, but by department, by elected official departments. How many, how many people work in that area? How many people are certified? Give a fraction.
Well, just like.
And, and asterisk the ones that are required, because those are the ones that really have a high score.
Like, if you want someone in each building from Jen's list, there's no one in the Carnegie Building that has been through the training. So, they have an AED over there, and no one's been through the training and knows how to use it that we know of, unless they've done it somewhere else. So, that's a concern. It's, you know, it's in that building and.
That's why, you know, broadcast that number. And then, the rest of us who maybe have gone through it, we get to shame those people and embarrass them. Whatever it takes, because if we had a incident over there today or tomorrow and we knew no one was there to do this, then shame on us.
Carnegie has a non-county office over there too. So, did they get invited to do the training, the CPR training?
I don't know about public defender. I know that the circuit clerk and Holly reached out, 'cause some of their staff have been through the training. And CM agreed that yes, they could go through it with us and have it paid for. So, I know that it's been offered to staff in the courthouse. I don't know about the staff in the Carnegie Building that are not county employees. When I send out the, when you send out notices to everyone, are they included?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the public defenders are on third floor, right? Is there an AED on the third floor?
First and third, I think.
First and third, that's right.
Yeah. I, I don't know, I think it's only downstairs. I, I believe there's only one in there.
So, I mean, whenever somebody is hired and, I don't know, you did this CPR training was kind of a, let's do this all now.
We're gonna continue to offer it, 'cause we have childcare providers and other people that go through the training. So, we will continue.
So, when they're hired, we could offer it to them right up front.
And maybe they have to complete it within the first six months, you know, it's kind of part of that new employee checklist.
I mean, if they don't wanna do it, they don't wanna do it. I don't, I don't want to force somebody to do it if they're not gonna be comfortable using it anyway, but. I don't, I don't force somebody to do it if they're not gonna be comfortable using it anyway, but.
I also feel like they need to keep up on their certification because things change. Just like AHA is coming out with new guidelines this October. So, I don't think it's a one and done.
So, I think, you know, I certainly understand where you're going with that. I think part of that was to address the underlying of making it less cumbersome for folks who may have a concern. So, if you have the life skill of understanding what that looks like, how to assess somebody, how to access nine-one-one, and you have those basic skills, that is far and above beyond what somebody who doesn't know anything can be able to do. So, engaging us quickly from a nine-one-one response standpoint is half the battle. So, it's, it's giving somebody that baseline knowledge. Yes, there are certainly, you know, nuances and things that change over the course of, you know, as research is published and that sort of stuff. But we just want to give somebody the basic skills of this is how you do it and this is what to look for. And then even, you know, if we're going to continue to include Narcan and tourniquets and those sorts of things, people need to train on those. Because if you're not trained, they can be harmful. So, it's kind of just where the request comes from.
Which Narcans do you have in there?
It'll be, I believe it's the nasal Narcan.
Was it eight-milligram or there's, there's different sizes?
I believe.
One of them is not gonna be dangerous and there are other ones that are.
I believe it's the four-milligram.
We could go get it. There's always someone in the box right there, right?
And I don't, I mean, if there's tourniquets in there, somebody doesn't know how to use it. Not sure how many people know how to use it even going through the training. So, that's almost a first responder training there.
Well, I think it goes to using it improperly. That, that requires a little bit. So, you know, obviously, in the case of a tourniquet, you're cutting off circulation. So, if it's truly not an arterial or life-threatening.
Yeah, if I fall down the stairs and my leg is hurting, you start putting it around my neck, we're probably gonna be having trouble.
Correct.
Because I know you know how to use it. That's a bad thing though.
Right. So, I think those are all valid points and.
I think the Safety Committee was originally set up and designed for keeping our employees and the buildings that they work in, knowing that they're safe. Making sure they know their surroundings and it was part of insurance liability. Do you have a safety committee or are you keeping your employees involved? And that's just it. And that's what that committee has always done. Basically, kept a person within each department involved, offering the training, offering the things on the walls to help, you know.
The maps, so people know how to use the exits right and tornado shelters and fire extinguishers.
These steps are very slick and employees know that. So, it was to keep them involved, but to make it mandatory that all county employees go through CPR the first day when you have a lot of elected officials that are not going to, for office. You know, that's not their job. You know, that's not what they do. So, but again, and I like the safety of being involved and spreading the word, that kind of stuff. It's a mandatory.
I was trying to get away from the mandatory part, but I like the idea of having somebody kind of in every area that would know and could help.
Like Don will be one of those from clerk and then I'll be one from official. So, we get another official.
Just call.
I'll drive myself.
We get another, we get another clerk, then we can cover on the second floor. Right, Don?
Right.
Thank you for all the.
We can send it out again and make sure staff realize that it's no charge. But if elected officials and department heads would encourage it, that would go a long way. Because it does take a while to do those videos. So, if they could have time during their workday to do that, it doesn't have to be one day, you know, and time to come and take the skills test or volunteer, you know, Jen and Dana to come to them to do the skills test. If it's easier, if you get a group of staff. But I would say that some people probably don't want to take the time to do it on their own time, you know, so.
Yeah, the videos are like four to five hours.
Seems like never mind.
Yeah, it takes a long time.
Yeah. And if you have to sit in a room and do it together, you know, I mean, we can do that type of class, but a lot of people like to do the videos on their own time and then just do the skills test.
So, if we don't have anybody at Carnegie, do we reach out to the public defender and see if they've got somebody that'd be interested? Because like I said, I don't think it's a bad idea to have as many people that knows how to do it. I'm just not gonna do a mandatory thing. Maybe just bring it to everybody's attention every six months or something.
Do we bill them every month for rent?
Public defender?
Yes.
We, through the state statute, we can bill them depending on the population of the counties they serve. It's not a whole lot.
Well, I'm just wondering, you could put a little insert into the bill and say, by the way.
Well, I just bill the counties. I don't, I don't really communicate with people.
I understand, but if we know there are two dozen folks over there, there?
Probably just a couple.
I mean, with, on one, I'm sorry, the basement and the top floor.
And they keep up on those spaces. And we could reach out through the Safety Committee to the assessor's office themselves. I don't know if somebody's on that.
I don't remember somebody from the assessor's office being in the committee meeting the other day.
Sometimes they really don't get involved.
It'd be nice to find somebody now, not when the assessor comes in.
So, will Health take the first step here and send out something to basically everybody, hey, you're invited?
Yeah, we have, but, you know, we'll resend it out.
Okay.
Encourage. And the last time, I think Jen might have sent it to like all employees, you know, using Debbie's list. And then sometime later, I sent it to the elected officials and department heads saying, you know, please, you know, encourage your staff to do this. You know, if Sam or if you guys would like, you know, we could send you the email and have you forward it to the elected officials and departments. I don't think there would be more coming from you instead of me. Or maybe from, I don't know.
I'd be glad.
Yeah, and technically, keep one commissioner on that Safety Committee was always a goal when I was doing it just to keep your departments involved, keep people involved. Don't count no more guys from there.
So, do you have one of us on the committee?
Not now. I mean.
I think Jeff just volunteered.
Yep.
Congratulations.
On the Safety Committee, Debbie, I've gone there.
I want him to do it.
No, but the.
The AED won't let you mess it up.
It audibly tells you what to do. You don't have to read it. It tells you.
I mean.
You do have to listen and follow instructions.
If I start ripping your shirt off middle of the meeting and just for the AED and just say, I'm okay, I'll be like, okay.
Okay, well.
We will continue to work?
Yes.
I think just keep people's attention with it and the AEDs too. I mean, I've, we got one out here somewhere. If I ran out there, I'd be looking around.
Yeah, we need, we need to know where it is too. I see the signs under or I don't, I don't know where it is.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Request issued, RFP for employee wellness.
So, this kind of piggybacks off of the conversation about utilizing the Employee Wellness Fund to fund CPR. That kind of brought up a conversation about where we stand with the Work Site Wellness Committee. And even further back internally, our agency has done a big push for physical fitness. We have physical fitness standards within our job descriptions and our folks have really embraced that on a day-to-day basis, taking time out to work out and ensure that they're able to meet those needs. One of the things that has been a heavy push from my staff here recently is to provide access to a gym facility for, for our employees. And I think that's one thing that kind of led to another in the conversation of the Safety Committee, Work Site Wellness, is that we are, there is money set aside for Work Site Wellness, which is currently being used to provide snacks to county employees. And I believe that there is some room to increase that benefit and maybe make that a little bit more tangible by offering a physical fitness membership for county employees. The first step in doing so would be to try and get an RFP together to understand how low we can get those membership costs. Our agency, when we were looking at doing this in-house, was able to provide one vendor that I thought was a very reasonable price. But maybe we can leverage that and earn some even lower fees if they know that they're competing against each other. So, the request that we're actually talking about is, is to run the RFP, but if there's a bigger discussion about how we want to proceed with that, it's a good venue to do so.
And first some background. So, we started the Work Site Wellness Committee, I don't know when, but, you know, and I, I'll admit during, during COVID, it certainly took a back burner for my staff. We were, you know, had a lot of other things on our plate at that time. So, and we've had some staff turnover of nurses that took it over. We do continue to do the healthy snacks in the, in the buildings, which that's up for discussion every year when we do the budget. We also, we also use that money to pay for biometrics because a lot of people don't have a regular doctor. They don't go to the doctor every year. They need to know where they stand with their cholesterol and the other things that the biometrics covers. So, that's one big thing that's came out of that fund. It was several years ago, Debbie, perhaps probably seven or eight, when we also explored the idea of gym memberships. And we called every single gym in town and they were, some of them were willing to give discounts, some were not. And I know that the idea of paying for gym memberships out of like payroll deduction and things like that was, was very cumbersome. And it was also, the county, of course, does not want to pay for something that people are not being, are not using. A lot of people, you know, if they want to exercise, they found a way, they pay for it. We have a few exercise things in our building. I know the oldie invest station did. The Sheriff's Office has their own workout equipment. So, some of those things have been explored in the past. Some of those gyms aren't even in existence anymore. That would give us discounts. But I think it, in my personal opinion and talking to my staff, I think it would be very hard to find one vendor that meets everyone's needs. I know that I have staff that, you know, work out at home. That's what I do. I know we have a lot of staff that do not live in Jefferson City, so they're not gonna use a workout facility in Jefferson City. They work out at home. They do their own thing. So, I, I have some concerns about trying to find one vendor that meets everyone's needs and offering a benefit to some employees and not others. There's, you know.
I would say before we do an RFP, is maybe send out a survey to our employees and say, if we offered a membership to a fitness club, would you use it? And then, you know, like, I was a member of the Link because the Link's from the east side. You've got some that are, I mean, they go to the Health Plex, that's where they go. You've got others, the YMCA is where they go. So, if you say, okay, you can't go to the Link, you're gonna go to Planet Fitness. You're gonna have some people that say, no, I'm not gonna change. I like the equipment. I like the people. So, but I would, I would maybe suggest we send out a survey first to all of our employees and say, if we offered this, would you use it? And if you have any membership, would you switch? There was no cost because the Link was, is forty dollars a month. So, so, you know, it's not inexpensive. Health Plex is not inexpensive. I don't know on YMCA.
The family membership at the Y is like fifty-five dollars a month. And then you get discounts for like the summer camps and things like that. I do an online group. That's thirty dollars a month.
I would, I would first see how many of our employees would utilize it. And then if we end up with seventy-five, who'd say, oh, yes, I'd use it. Well, then maybe, maybe.
And the Safety Committee itself does not have a budget, does not have money to.
Is this Safety Committee or Wellness?
This is Wellness. The Wellness Fund, the Wellness Fund, that you guys set aside money, that we use part of it.
So, the Wellness, where does the Wellness money come from?
Actually, it comes from the Health Insurance Fund.
From the Health Insurance Fund.
And yes, we have in the past, since it was like two thousand seventeen, I spent a little money on the Wellness Group. This year, I think the budget was like fifteen thousand. But as you remember, the health insurance last year or this year, it was our first year, we had to pass some of that cost to the employees for their health insurance coverage. I truly am looking at next year that even going up higher because our Health Insurance Fund. So, if you want to do a way, do a way with the Wellness. But as far as I would think you guys might, even before you do a survey, we look at the Health Insurance Fund and see how healthy or not.
We also pay for some, like we did a walking challenge. Remember the Zombie, you know, app? And like Biggest Loser. So, we've used that money to do things for our staff to not just biometrics and snacks. The Zombie Challenge, a lot of people really liked that.
That was the biggest participation with that. Everything else, yeah, we used to do Lunch and Learns and we have. Everything else, I had maybe thirty people to participate in.
I guess I, I don't want to get down too far a rabbit hole and, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'll put back on my department hat. Because this conversation really did segue from something that we were looking at as an agency to maybe being a county-wide initiative. So, I guess I'll put back on, on my, my other hat. Our folks have a very hard, big desire to see this happen in our agency. And we are an agency that has physical expectations. We have had instances here recently where our folks have been placed in very demanding physical situations and, you know, have pushed themselves to the limits and in some cases, beyond the limits. So, I guess if, if we want to go and it's slow-roll this somewhere from, from a county-wide initiative, that's fine. But I guess I will stand on my soapbox and ask for permission to go full speed ahead for our agency because it is a matter of safety.
Is your agency all gonna want to go to the same gym? I mean, that's where I see a lot of issues. Because Planet Fitness kind of appeals to certain niches and then there's other ones that have, you know, maybe some heavier weightlifting and stuff. And then you got me, I'm lifting my coffee up in the morning, set up out of bed is my setup for the day, so.
So, I think what we're trying.
I want to mandate it then or?
So, I think what we're trying to do is provide a solution for folks while they are on duty. A centrally located spot where we can rotate people through so that they can get their physical fitness that they are obligated to do via their job description on a daily basis.
And they'll do that during working hours.
Yes.
During workouts, at a different facility.
Correct.
And they would pick up and leave when they get a call.
Correct. This is no different than what the Fire Department does. We have physical expectations. We put people in life-threatening situations. They need to work out and they need access to physical healthcare.
I agree. I think they should have medical, physical capabilities. If they get a call, a lot of times because they're being called to somebody's house, not necessarily for an emergency, but somebody fell out of bed and is having to lift somebody up. And they do have some physical capabilities that are required.
I first started the Health Department, they had a policy where people could have like thirty minutes a day to walk. But given the, that was our old building and giving the neighborhood, we kind of phased away from that because it was like, I'm not sure we should be walking, you know. There was like several beware of dogs and then like the train tracks. So, Health Department did have a wellness policy like that.
I mean, how much equipment are you gonna need? I mean, we could set stuff up in a, in an area of different buildings or different stations?
I, I mean, so, so we did some preliminary work on this when we were, there, there is a room in, in our building that is designed for this. However, to purchase equipment to achieve what we're trying to achieve.
You're saying the budget for the snacks is what, fifteen thousand?
Correct.
And I think when we were talking, you were talking about, well, we could get a fifty-dollar membership for everybody. So, fifteen thousand, you could. So, fifteen thousand, you could set something up pretty easily somewhere and build on it, you know, if we're going to.
Well, what does the Sheriff's Department do? Do you have an exercise for a member?
Yeah, yeah. Mike Sneller, of course, he retired a few years back. He actually took it upon himself to go out and beg, steal and borrow different equipment, you know, gyms that were basically, had updated their equipment. He would get their roll. So, everything we have is pretty much donated, you know, to us.
And, and we've, we've pursued those options. We've, we've kind of gone down the path. I, I mean, to outfit our gym the, the way that we would, would, I mean, it would take several tens of years to pay for the gym membership to offset what we're going to try and do.
You don't need to be that elaborate. You know, I mean, you could do a sit-ups, you put your feet underneath the bed frame. I mean, it's push-ups, you don't have to have anything. So, there can be, I mean, Richard Simmons was doing it years ago without any equipment.
He's dead now.
I'm bringing him back out to Halloween, that's going to be awesome.
Did you do exercises watching Richard Simmons? Did that motivate you to?
No, I was probably outside doing something else and didn't have TV like that back then.
So, again, the request is to allow our staff to access physical exercise, gym, a gym on duty. If that benefit extends into their personal life and they choose to use it, that's fine. If they choose to go to the gym on duty, that is great. That's what we want them to do. If they choose to go somewhere else, we will support them and do that. Maybe you go, you know, run on the track at the high school instead of going to the gym that day. We're fine.
Walk around the building.
Correct. But we want them to have access.
Stairs, buildings, we can put some kind of makeshift weights or whatever we have, we can find at, I don't know, maybe out at Wardsville, if there's room in a corner. And then you can, you know, let them do it while they're on shift. And, you know, that takes away from their Facebook time, but they can get off their phone and go do some exercising for a bit. When they're done, they come in town, backfield, somebody can rotate. I, I mean, there's ideas and ways to do it rather than throwing fifteen thousand at it, I think. So, that's where I'm, and even the snacks, I think, I don't think, I think we all get rid of that too. I don't see the benefit there. We can have them there. There is benefit, because I have actually eaten some of them when I was getting hungry, so that probably saves a little bit of trouble here. But if we do, put a box up there and do it on an honor system if you still want to provide that. But if we're spending fifteen thousand on snacks, that's.
We're really not spending that much money, so.
I think we've spent.
That makes me feel a little better.
We have not, we've spent so far this year, half the year, five.
Yeah, we're about, yeah.
I agree, your people are specialized. They have to lift, lift, they have to, so, exercise, exercising one way or another. I think it's kind of like the same as the Sheriff's Department. Your, your requirements are different than, than, you know, somebody in our commission office or somebody in a bar or in a collector or something.
So, are you saying give them work time to work out? Because I'm not, I'm not for that either, because it's not fair to people that don't have a, maybe as strenuous as a job. They probably have more of a mental need to go out and work out, because they don't punch people during the day, so.
I mean, but the, the key difference here is our folks work forty-eight hour shifts. So, they have to work out on duty. They do not have the opportunity to go home at the end of an eight-hour day.
You don't have to work out seven days a week.
Again, we are, we are asking our people to go into life-threatening hazardous situations and save somebody else's life. We need to give them access to physical healthcare equipment. This is non-negotiable for me. And, and this is probably is about as animated as I will get in, in this setting, but.
So, are you going to have ways to measure how much better and how much our physical capabilities increase instead?
Sure, we'd love to. We'd, we'd love to get into the weeds on this. But we are slowly tiptoeing our way there. But, yeah, I mean, is the future requiring them to work out? Having physical standards that we are measuring annually? Yes, absolutely. But we can't do any of that until we give them the tools to start achieving those things.
So, we're going to do this for Public Works too? I mean, because they're standing on the highway.
Stop, stop a second, just a second. They're different. They are different.
Is that different from Public Works, Sheriff's Department? Anybody else that has physical capabilities that are required?
Put Public Works on a forty-eight hour schedule, back-to-back twenty-four.
You might be careful saying that after someone would like.
Well, you know, someone sat in this chair some years ago and said, I'm not going to pay anybody to sleep. And looked at the ambulance director and said, we're not going to pay anybody to sleep. Well, yes, we do, because we make you stay there for forty-eight hours straight.
I wasn't crazy about forty-eight hour shifts either, but that is part of the nature of the animal.
That is the animal.
That doesn't mean that they have to have time to work out in a two-day period. You can take two days off from your physical exercises. They should be doing it anyway to be ready for their job. I mean, you've got to be able to perform.
I'm going to defer to the expert and not to somebody who doesn't know what the forty-eight hours back to, is like. They're different. They are different. They get paid different.
I pulled a forty-eight shift yesterday and today.
Well, it's starting to show.
That's why we got snacks in there, so. It's on me to be able to lift lumber or to do whatever for my job. I mean, we don't get off to go work out.
We're getting close to budget time, so maybe that can be also in the budget. I guess Mark sent that out yesterday, anything Mark, right? That's an option, so.
So, when do we talk about the Wellness Budget coming out of the Health Medicare Budget or our Med, Med Budget, insurance?
Yeah, we could talk about it.
Health insurance, I'm sorry.
That one's on the table, you can talk about it, you know, it's coming. We have a meeting this month, no, next month, with Wall Street on Health Insurance and what the first six months of issues.
I asked you where we were at with the numbers. We talked about that this morning and it's going the wrong way.
It'll be interesting to know what, what measures they would look at to decrease our, you know. So, if you could say, you know, this many county staff have gym memberships or exercise five days a week. These, you know, this is how many smokers we have. This is how many whatever. What, what metrics do they look at that could help our insurance rates? Because if exercisers, then we could pull stuff and be like, how many people exercise five days a week?
It's something that's, the way I understand it, is not measurable. So, they're not really looking at, they're looking at how many people are on different kinds of drugs. So, what is the issue?
Right.
So, then, you know, we do, we need to give our people healthcare, that kind of stuff.
So, I guess I'll, again, shifting the conversation back. So, is the, is the issue using the Workside Wellness Fund? Or is it, or is it the proposal in, in itself? Because if it's a Workside Wellness Fund, I'll be selfish and I'll find a way to, to make this happen in my budget tomorrow.
No, I'm looking at the Wellness Fund being used for snacks and stuff. And that one, I didn't have anything to do with it.
And that's.
If we're saying we're not going to pay them while they're at work to do this, they can already do it while they're at work, is my point.
Sure.
I mean, you have downtime. And I know you've still got stuff to do, but I've driven by, I've seen them sitting doing other stuff that's not necessarily work-related. So, that'd be a great time to go do some physical exercise or while you're on Facebook, walk around the building.
One hundred percent.
Go run into the building and hurt yourself, obviously.
That, that's, that's what we're doing. So, so our, our piece is, can we use, or can my agency use our funds to provide them a facility to go work out while on duty?
At what price?
Yeah, what would the cost?
So, the, the quote that, that we have, that we've solicited from two vendors, the lowest one was forty-nine ninety-nine per employee per year.
Then we got to pay for it for everybody across the board, in my opinion. But y'all are different, so I'm just one.
So, would you make it mandatory for your employees to go exercise, or it's?
I think we would, we would tiptoe our way to that. And, and I think we have had and been transparent with our people that we have allotted this time to you. We are encouraging you to do this.
Encouraging, not mandating.
And, and the next step is, yes, you will do this. We've gone from, we're not supporting you, we are supporting you. The next step is, you will.
So, they take the test before they get employment? And so then, are you going to use that as their, they got to slowly go up and be able to?
I, I think, so, I think that goes back to the, the pre-employment is a capacity test. It is not an ability test. So, if, if part of this is that we need to go to an ability test, then, I mean, maybe that's something that we look at. But, again, it's, it's setting the expectation, then enforcing the expectation. And if we want to measure it, we certainly can, but that's several steps down the road here.
So, vote as the Sheriff's Department, are they, your, your officers able to exercise while they're on duty? Or do they do this after, they do it after they get off and before they, they, they come to work?
They do it on their own time.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't give them anything like that. And we've tried to in the past. And I don't know if it was Sheila or maybe Debbie, but I think they had even reached out to workers comp and they were concerned about the additional claims if we allow them to do that on duty for injuries from working out, essentially. So, but I do know, kind of like Chief Wigg expressed, some other law enforcement agencies in the area, they do give them time, you know, to maybe an hour shift or, or, you know, a couple hours a week, something like that, to go work out. So, I don't know how they're doing that on the backside with, you know, the workers comp insurance or whatnot, but I know that they do do that as well. Apparently, we do not. They just do it on their own time.
It's a different discussion, a plan that you play out to help.
We're talking about fifty dollars a year?
Per employee, yes.
Yeah.
Can we have seventy?
In operations, yes.
Okay.
Do the RFP just for that department if you want? And our survey, what are the next ones?
I would still do a survey first, maybe for all of our employees. And, you know, you can do your own survey and.
I don't mind setting up a survey and then saying what department and then breaking it down per EMS for everyone else. And then we can put it back on the agenda to see what that looks like, if that's the right effect you want to do.
And that way at Public Works, I mean, your guys start work so early and so I, I don't know, I don't know when they'd have time to, to utilize it, but.
I, I think we, we often miss, we, we, we throw all the employees, if we put four hundred employees and we throw them in a, in a pen and say, you know, today you're one of these, tomorrow you're one of these, and so on. And they're different. And we've got to quit going, what we do for one, we do for all. That is, that gets us in trouble. I mean.
Well, and I think.
Well, we're not saying you got to be equal. We're just saying you got to be fair. Why don't public works get an hour off to go exercise?
Why does Public Works, you go to four-ten's in the summertime and not everybody gets to go to four-ten's?
And they should get an hour off to go exercise as well then. Because they're working ten hours, I mean.
I got it.
They're out there in the heat, they take, it's a very strenuous activity.
Well, you're saying they're different.
They got to be able to lift a shovel.
They're different.
Or lean on it, I mean, what they're doing that day.
Jeff, are they different?
No, that's why they should get time off too, for an hour. Take the time off, go let them exercise for an hour too. Because that's what you're wanting to do here. And the sheriff's deputies get an hour off as well too. So, they have different, different, but you still got to be fair to everybody. And then you're telling the, even the clerks, well, y'all don't do enough strenuous stuff, so.
Sitting's when you're smoking, basically.
Yeah, we should actually give them an hour to get up and stretch out. If, you know, if they don't smoke, they don't get that break, so.
Yeah, sitting's very bad for you.
And it's fifty dollars a person a month, but we've been throwing money out the door, left and right, left and right, and our funds are showing it. So, that's where it, everything adds up in the end. So, this is only fifty dollars. Only fifty dollars turns into only fifty thousand dollars and it keeps building. So, at some point, stop the bleeding. I mean, people have to have some responsibility themselves to get in shape for what they're doing. I don't have a problem trying to find a good price for them to go to Planet Fitness or whoever. This is just a name that's come up. Or you can get a whole list of them and say, here's a whole list, you can.
So, so I will take fault in maybe steering this conversation in the wrong direction, right? Because for a long time, probably since the beginning of the year, this is something that we've been working on internally. There was an opportunity and, and maybe a desire to spread this countywide. And maybe that has taken this train off the tracks. So, if, if we aren't willing or, you know, interested in pursuing this countywide, it still comes back to addressing an interdepartmental need. And I have zero problems finding room in my budget to, to make that happen for our folks. And I think what comes of this is there was an incident several weekends ago where we had no less than three employees suffer work comp-related claims because they had to overly physically exert themselves in the effort of directly trying to save somebody's life. So, we've asked our people to get people out of the river. We've put people in buildings that have been blown apart. We, we do these things. We put them in positions. We need to give them tools physically to protect themselves.
When do you want to do this, chief?
So, I, I want to go through the right steps. I want to find the best deal to be conservative with our budget. But I would like permission to move forward and pursue this at least internally.
I support you.
Well, then we all just go ahead and put the RFP out and, and just see what prices come back, what memberships come back at. It might be.
So, when you say support, are you saying to get the RFP and then you're going to support giving all the EMS employees a membership and time off during workday? Or are we just talking membership? I'm not sitting here saying I don't support EMS and encourage them to be in better shape, to be able to lift people out of the river. I'm not saying that at all, so.
Well, then prove it.
They should be prepared to do their job.
I, I agree with you.
They, they don't necessarily have to do it on the work time, so. You got first responders out there that, they're not even getting paid to do it. They're out there putting their life on the line and lifting people out of the rivers and such do, so.
Are these exercise places open twenty-four hours a day?
That, that is one of the requirements that we are trying to, to figure out.
Do they have personal trainers available? Because you can't just give jump somebody a gym membership and be like, here, go figure it on your own. Like, they, they have to have a plan. You just go run the treadmill, you know, hours a day. They're not going to be strong enough to lift somebody out of the river. So, that's my two senses. They have to know what they're doing when they go to a gym.
And, and I think part of the, part of the piece i- is that they do work an eight-hour day. And if they go to the gym after that eight-hour day, they're still on duty. So, I don't know that classifying it as getting time off from their shift is, is necessarily an accurate representation.
They're getting paid while they're doing it, let's just put it that way.
Correct, yeah, yes, they are getting.
And don't try to make me look like a bad guy here, because I'm saying that people have some own responsibility to be in the shape that they, I guess, desire or want or need to be in. So, if we're going to do it, then we should have some requirements too. If we're going to pay for it, then, you know.
Ultimately, the most, somewhere down the road when we, we find a pile of money is we buy the equipment. We set up a, a fitness room with weights and everything else and they can just, again, they're at work.
Absolutely.
But they, they can do it, whether it be at South Ridge or whether it be down here. I went to the. But they, they can do it whether it be at South Ridge or whether it be down here. I went to the Link. My schedule sucks. So I bought my own recumbent bike. I didn't buy the cheapest. I didn't want a four hundred dollar bike. I would, but I ride it. Every day I rode a hundred and ten miles last week and forty-five this week. So, and because I've got it where I am when I'm not here. I guess I can bring it and put it in my office. I can ride it while I'm doing emails.
I don't think there's any space in there.
I know. But I, I think ultimately the, the most sense would be to do, kinda like the sheriff can have a, have an extra shot, a, a room that, that your people can kinda exercise if they get a call. They're in their ambulance and they're all, so.
I will continue to work on this and put together, uh, something that is a little bit more concrete so that we can not play hypotheticals. Thank you for your time.
Okay, okay. And I should've, we had Congressman Anderson's, uh, officer was here, which he hasn't.
Probably scared now.
I apologize. But anyway, uh, okay.
Sorry, I didn't want to scare her off. I do have a treadmill on my basement that you can.
Hey, if you'd like to donate it, we will definitely take your program.
I don't know. I gotta ask the wife first. She's the one that got it. It's great for hanging clothes on. I do know that.
Okay. I think we've breezed through everything.
We haven't breezed through anything.
I made decisions. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to section six, ten point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Legal under section six, ten point zero two one subsection one and personnel under section six point zero two one subsection thirteen.
Four o'clock, please? Yes.
Yes. Sure.